I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every right and justice for all.
Okay, morning here, ladies. All meetings are ordered. Are there any additions or changes to the agenda?
No.
I want you to second to approve the agenda as printed. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Vote nay. Motion carried. We have minutes from three twenty-three.
Oh, make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
The motion is second to approve the minutes of February twenty-three. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Vote nay. Motion carried. Do we have anybody in the public forum, general comments that on the agenda that I say anything? If not, I guess we'll move right in a couple of minutes early to Paul. Approve the engineer's contract and agreement. I think we have a document here for us here. And if I understand it, we're approved to have a contract in place about first of March. We haven't done so yet, so time is upon us. Any comments you'd like to make, Paul?
I would like the K. Cole Morgan Amendment added to this, but I don't know. This is the same contract that was written fifteen years ago in two weeks. What's changed is the dates, the chair, and the salary.
I called up the salary schedule at State of Iowa last night, and it looked like your asking would be pretty much aligned, as far as I was concerned, because I understand it, that figures out to be at ninety-seven thousand, that figures out to be just over three percent.
Yes.
Three point one. Anything in the wording or definitions that you see is wrong, we ought to change or take a look at it? You're pretty satisfied with what's written?
I think that if it comes down to issues with the contract, we have bigger issues.
Okay.
All right.
I'll make a motion to approve the contract for county engineer for next year.
I'll second.
The motion is second to approve county engineer's contract for next year, which would be for ninety-seven thousand dollars, the exact same way and language we had in last year. Any discussion?
Well, I'd like to just see it at three percent. I know the reasoning why. We're talking three point one, just to keep an eye on everything else. That's the only objection I have, and ain't a whole lot of difference.
Jim, you guys set the salary?
Yeah.
Any other discussion? The motion stands now to be ninety-seven, unless...
Yeah, yeah.
Going to amend it?
I mean, like I say, that's all. It's not a big deal.
Any other discussion, all in favor of the motion as made? Say aye.
Aye.
Vote nay. Motion carried.
Other business this morning, we did get the rest of the bid checks from EC Source this morning, twenty-eight thousand, I think, for the first one. I can't think. It's not Elm. What is the Q? Q in one forty, or the one sixtieth, one fiftieth. Q in one fiftieth, that came in. Otherwise, we're bound to just the moving permit. So they paid the three, repair the road.
Good. Will we cover the cost to me, Paul?
Excuse me?
Will we be able to cover the cost of what damage?
We build and day labor. We build labor and materials.
Yeah.
And we were fortunate that we had the time to get back in there on a hard road. It looks like we'll have this week, most of this week...
Then she's gonna get soft.
Then she's gonna get soft, and we're down south of three, somewhere in the fields. So our next is gonna be pullback off of Two Fiftieth North and back west, might get to be...
There's no really straight road, and they're gonna do a lot of jockeying around.
Right. They identified the roads, the travel roads for the construction, for the heavy loads, and hopefully they do what they say they're gonna do. I do, I appreciate them paying.
It's three bills, isn't it?
Mm-hmm.
What's the total on the three? Five fifty?
I don't know.
Was it ten eight thousand, or was it eighteen thousand?
Six thousand.
Yeah, it's already closer to sixty thousand, I think. Well, I think it was going to sign the bill.
I, uh...
Good job.
Seems like it was an eighteen, twelve, and something else, so...
Tom Bash talked to me all day on Thursday about, Wednesday about that, right, with him, and they are, their boy doesn't think they should put a bill in for damage, and he says, can't figure out why they won't. I said, what you waiting for?
Well, and I think they, it's my understanding, they intend to try to bill once later on.
I don't know.
I'd much rather do it as you go.
Well, especially when we get where we were at. Their situation's a little different. They were hauling pulls in, and they had one stretch of road that they, anyway, they have a different situation.
Different, yeah, sure.
We had a road on the east side of a river, and it's the only, you know, it's something that we could not just close either end of it and leave it sit. So that's where we're at. But that's good news. We'll watch them this week. They were running over the weekend, didn't run very much last week because it was too cold. So hopefully they can get a big chunk of this done before we lose everything for temperatures. Contrary to popular belief, I'd like the temperatures in March to be about twenty-two or twenty-four. Be all right with me.
Yeah.
If we could order it twenty-four and so, it'd be okay. Otherwise, no other good news.
Have you put the patch on to see what the ten cents are gonna do for the county?
The ten cents is, by schedule, is right at five hundred thousand. I believe it was like a hundred and a quarter for farm-to-market and three hundred and seventy-five thousand for secondary road fund.
Pretty good.
And we talked about that fairly extensively last Monday night.
Yeah, on Bill.
Otherwise, the heat on the cylinders, I get used to wearing a suit, because everybody wore a suit fifteen years ago.
And...
Right.
We'll be, we'll be ready. I expect to see that tie on you in the works.
You bet.
All day.
Okay, the next item we can work on here, authorized chairman to sign a quick claim deed for the DX station. I think that's been the other one, John.
I think so.
Yep.
Mr. McPhee, that is my answer.
Kevin McPhee, yep.
I think we, it's been pregnant me. I think we got him the ground water well, the well closing certificate, and a certificate from the DNR saying, okay. There's not, I don't think there's much more we can give him, to tell him that the problem's taken care of.
Good. Yeah, I talked to him. He's happy. He's gonna just, he's thinking about putting a roof on it and just having a storage building. He lives pretty close to there, so.
Cheap garage, huh?
Yeah, he's gonna mess with it, so. At least he'll get back on the tax rolls, fine.
How many years we been working that? Ten? I've been caring about it ever since I've been on the field.
Yeah.
I think it was eight if we cleaned after the first year.
I do, too.
And since then, they just keep saying, okay, well, this is fine. We just need one more, one more.
So they keep collecting money, I suppose.
I think they told me since I came, I've been here almost five years, and when I came here, they told me, probably one more check and we'd be done.
For five years.
They told me that every time, and it's twice a year, so. But it should be good. I don't think we can give them anything more than that.
Good.
When that contractor can get free money just by dragging his feet on it.
They have other checks.
Yeah, it was all about the money. That's all it was.
Do we have a motion to approve the chairman to sign the claim deed?
I'll make a motion to sign the quick claim deed on the sale of the Laverne DX property.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you, by more. Those in favor of authorizing chairman to sign the claim deed for the DX station in Laverne, say aye.
Aye.
Vote nay. Motion carried. It's not bad, that's gonna be. All right, we got Denise Fowler coming in here at nine o'clock. Anything you need to tell us about Peggy?
Um, I probably have some little odds and ends, like housekeeping type things, so let me see what I have here.
You got a lecture tomorrow?
We sure do, yeah.
Oh, that's right.
People that live in Humboldt only, and we've had some questions about people who maybe have a rural Humboldt address, but they have to live in the city, so not outside. Got a quote from Tammy Norman when I was at our last ICAC meeting, and some chairs. And I don't know if any of you have used their, like, if you go through their kitchen area and go to that room there, conference room, they've got some real comfortable chairs. I had to hold and take a look at them, and they're very reasonably priced, if those would work for replacing the board chairs. So, look at that. I did stop at, there's a office supply warehouse in Des Moines that stocks chairs, they have used chairs and they have new. And I looked at some of them in there, and they had a couple of ones that were pretty decent, I thought, for chairs. So those are options, too.
Are two similar, what that has downstairs, emergency maintenance?
These ones, no. They have more padding in them. The ones that Pat has is more like a...
Yeah, they don't have a whole lot of cushion in them.
Yeah, they've got arms.
These are adjustable, up and down, the arms are adjustable.
Very easily adjustable. You don't have to fight to try to find where things are at. It's just...
Doesn't look too bad.
The handle's right there, and I know you talked about getting them switched before the end of the year. I had in quarters eight chairs, so you'd have two extras if you want less than that, you know, just let me know, or more than that.
I just see it says ten on there, but you...
Oh, it's a little higher than, because I would have asked her for a quote for eight.
I've sat, I have sat on those chairs. They're really nice.
I have backed them.
I like the arms up and down, and the seats go up and down.
Yeah.
He's got that one in his office.
Which is, yeah, something like that.
Maybe tell the old lady, "Oh."
Oh, really?
Yeah, I think he, I think he already asked about that.
You can have that for taste.
Yeah, we'll see if that works. I'd be all right with eight of them.
I think it's a good idea, Peggy. I like that idea.
Yeah, and they seem very comfortable. It's hard to find a good office chair without getting something that's overstuffed.
Yeah, I really did.
And apply too much to getting down to nothing, you know, that's not comfortable at all.
Well, it's a lot more than that, Office Max.
Oh, yeah, yeah. All right, so if you guys are all right with that, I'll...
Yeah.
Okay. Just wanted to fill in Carl and Harlan on the electronic specialties quote, the one for the cameras. It does include the light feed to the LEC. The cameras would go in the first floor hallway, on the main entrance, and then up on the second floor, somewhere in the court area, either, I had him talk to the courts to see if they wanted, in the courtroom or in the hallway, and they'd rather have it somewhere in the hallway facing their office. So we don't need to take action or anything on that. That's something we can do in July, but I imagine he'd like to know if we want to pay the quota for five thousand eight hundred dollars for those cameras.
Well, I think it's something we need to do. You guys, you guys worked on to, when Katie talked to the supervisors, that was his main topic, was courthouse security. We're supposed to have a task force or a team here.
And we do have a courthouse security team, but it hasn't met for many, many years, so...
And, I don't know, I got a copy of it. Do you have a copy of what his recommendations are?
Yeah.
Okay. But, you know, he's got a lot of things that we would never be able to do because of the design. They want, you have a prisoner you gotta bring up, they want a separate entrance way and all that stuff. I mean, we'd never be able to do that, but...
And he admitted that. He said...
Oh, yeah.
He said something you'd never be able to do, didn't you?
But you know, like Wright County, Stan said that they're gonna be spending a lot of money revamping their courthouse, so, you know, they, they're gonna like incorporate it. That could be, a lot of those things could up the ante what that thing would cost. I don't know where their courtroom is in their courthouse, but...
We don't have too many situations here where the sheriff's department's bringing more than one or two prisoners at a time. If they do bring them, they're, depends on the, all shackled feet names. But I think absent one night where the computers didn't work in the jail, and we ended up, I think, three deputies, a police officer, three people who have just been arrested, the magistrate, meeting in the magistrate's courtroom, to essentially release three guys from jail on civil misdemeanors, and we had four, four law enforcement for that. You know, as far as the prison thing, I don't think is it too big a deal except for, you know, they just, they bring them in and take them up in the elevator, but, I'm sure people will no longer see the orange jumpsuit, but we don't...
Yeah.
A lot of other jurisdictions have it easier, because we have to have a law enforcement in the courtroom.
Well, no, they do. They do. We're still, as near as I can tell, they'll encounter that follow that, but we said the same as Pocahontas, Dalhous, Bass, Webster, Hamilton, Wright, I don't know, fifteen counties, we had the director for our chief judge say, court rooms when the inflection...
It's just that some counties have it, could align that, right?
None of them have.
Some jurisdictions have it.
Well, that's what I saw, Hamilton County's not doing it. They're, they're not doing it, yeah.
Other parts of the state.
We're too nice.
Judges that have rotated through here are, now they're not surprised anymore, but they're really appreciative, and they're, and they do a nice job. They talk to the deputy who was up there, and they say, we need you here for this, this, and this. We're done at two, leave at two, and the clerk's office has been real good, so we don't have a deputy or two sitting upstairs on a Monday when we have court from nine to four when there's two hearings. So they're up there when they need to be. But the judges that come through here are really happy about it. Judge Grace Dobie's really happy about it. It's, it's really nice, and they, they go talk to sheriffs in other counties and complain about it, but we do it, we make good.
Is the south door, is that open, Dan, good or not?
It is, but that's on our plan to do some door locking, too.
And how about the handicapped door?
Handicapped is, and will have to be.
Uh-huh.
The handicap door is unlocked at all times, and it has to be.
But John, again, is that gonna be cameraed? Because there'd be a good chance that's where somebody's coming in.
Yeah, but we don't have one there right now. We'd have to take one from some other area, because these cameras would put us at capacity without...
Yeah, we can only do three more.
That's a good point, with that, it might be...
But you know, the one thing for us is if, if the judges are working with them, and they're not setting it all day, when we reviewed budget and seen how much overtime all the officers were getting, like, we needed another person, basically.
Yeah.
So in some ways, we probably get at least three fourths of that time for another officer. It doesn't all stay in the courthouse, so...
No, it's really actually useful, because, yeah, you're not, the, the new deputy that's been hired is not just bending...
Right, because we definitely needed help on the overtime side of things, and...
They needed a lot of help.
I didn't realize they were getting that high, but it was pretty high.
You got one deputy working overnight on the weekend. We just need another deputy at family, so. It's been really useful for court, and it's been really useful for everything else.
Worked out well, then?
Yeah.
All right.
And if you wanna change locations of any of the cameras, I'm sure they're moving to somewhere else.
Yeah.
So we're putting one here on this floor?
That's what he said, yeah, and one at the main entrance, and then one up on second.
Probably could just, you know, one here in the center, and one downstairs center, and one upstairs center, and that would cover us.
Okay.
I mean, that's just, because why would you need them at the bottom of stairs and at the top of stairs?
I was just thinking that, too, because if you had that in that center, you could get a pretty good view of that hallway plus line back, you can take them through the elevator as well.
So...
Because they can come up that elevator, too. The camera'll have to catch them people, too, coming up the elevator.
You know, when we get ready to do that, we maybe could just have them come up.
My wife's coming with them.
We should have them come up and walk through it with them or something.
Who's the lights and dispatch?
Before we place them, you know, let's get a better understanding of what he's thinking.
Those lights and dispatch center all the time?
Yes.
For some court hours, I understand, just have them on. I don't feel any good, just have them on.
Tape.
Tape.
Yeah.
I can't see what they're accomplishing, other than that.
Well, they do that because if somebody slips out here or whatever, they...
That, that, too.
Rehability or whatever.
That's accurate.
Yeah, he could come up, probably walk us through that and give us a better picture where it would be, where it would be the best location.
Okay, I'll put that down. Want to update Jerry and Carl also on, you remember we talked about the township trustees? I was telling these guys last week that the Idaho State Extension University Director, Jerry Chezek, did some checking with his board, and they are gonna pay for the meeting speaker to come and draw the books for the township trustees. All we have to do is provide the space, if they would even bring some cookies if we provide the coffee, I said, I think we could do that.
Good deal.
One thing, I was gonna ask you, when township trustees come to this, normally whenever they have a meeting, we pay them their per DMC of twenty-five dollars. Want to include that as part of their...
I think we should, yeah.
Yeah.
I think it's only fair.
Okay.
So where do you have that at?
Down in the sitting room downstairs, or the magistrate courtroom. We can set up tables.
Once a year, twice a year?
Just once for this meeting, and then they'll have their books, and, I'm sure they'll have some questions.
You know, someone will meet twice a year. A lot of times it's fifty dollars, you see in the requests, so.
Okay.
We're just fortunate we get people to serve on those.
Exactly.
It's not easy anymore.
But have you signed that, so we pay that to them? Denise is running about ten to fifteen minutes late, they said.
All right.
Yes, I think that's all I got.
Peggy, you just had a note that Denise will be here late. We'll go ahead and tell the committee report, Terry. Do you do anything?
Yeah, sure. Peggy, on Monday night, of course, on the twenty-third of February, we had a Farm Bureau meeting at six thirty, supper with them, and had a nice discussion. Farm Bureau Board has got some new younger members now, so we got to meet a couple of those, and Peggy gave a little overview, and I talked a little bit about mental health, and then Rick, uh, let Rick, Rick talked a little bit about the jail. He did a nice job on that. And then Paul went over the roads and the tax thing and stuff, and we got a couple of compliments from area truckers that travel a lot of the roads, that thought our Humboldt County roads is the best around, about four or five counties around us, so. That was kinda, it got everybody's attention on our side.
Even the snowmobile?
Well, they just said, drive around. They said, drive around all, all year round and see what you're...
Overall, overall, they're good.
Yeah. So that was nice, and...
There's probably days on there.
Yeah.
Overall, they're better.
We just had a good discussion, and we always seem to, I think we've got a good working relationship.
That's one thing North Carolina has. We hear a lot of other counties, we gotta keep that good.
That's good communications.
And then on Wednesday, at ten o'clock, we had a CSS meeting in Allison Island, and Don Bash and I decided right together, we gotta start this clearing, and we thought, couldn't see the road, but a good one assembled our meeting, and so we went to clearing to the tele site and did it there. But we didn't have a lot on the agenda. We went over some adjust, or adjustments, and some changes, and corrections, and additions on the twenty-eighty agreement, and things are going pretty smooth, so we won't come any more on that. And then on...
Excuse me, were we meeting again?
That was CSS.
CSS, okay.
Don, Bob Lincoln wasn't there that day. He was in Des Moines for a special meeting, but the meeting went well, and we just, you know, got through the regular business. So then Thursday evening at five o'clock, I was in Webster City, and that was for CFI. And looking at options again, trying to find a location for a piece of land, maybe do some construction project, or maybe adding on the north site in Fort Dodge. Cash balance is about one point five million now, and we're paid another fifty thousand off on our A and B building.
Yeah.
We're busted a year, or two or three years ago.
It's some good, good counselors.
Well, I just think, yeah, we did, we did.
Then if I make you still available north side of the building?
Um, they're looking into that, but there's also property across from the hospital that are kinda interesting, and a lot of it just depends on zoning part of it, so. And that's a long way, I mean, that's a couple of years off, but I think the first part might be locate a piece of property, so. That being said, our meetings are down to an hour instead of two hours, or two and a half hours, and I, it's just unbelievable, the meetings, Michelle Del Rivas and Sally Carnes, and she's at Second Order Command, and they, they presented good material and accurate material, and we see where we're making money, where we're not making money, and things are not working, we got rid of some of it, so. You can turn things around, but we're pretty lucky, too, to turn it around.
It's got a funny goal, and it's not all...
Oh, yeah, I mean, an hour meeting, it's not a bad deal anymore, so. That's all I had.
Okay. Well, I was there Monday evening for Farm Bureau. Like Jerry said, it was, it's always a good meeting to attend. And then Wednesday morning, I was down at the LEC. We met with the INS, Steve Cook and Dean Crew, who was there, looking at making some adjustments, mainly to the dispatch area. They have these consoles where they have all their screens and their computers and all these things set up, and they're kinda concerned about the room that was available, so we kinda made some adjustments there, and I think it'll work out a lot better for them. Looked at on the plans, I don't know if you ever noticed, there was a little kitchenette type thing in the dispatch room, and we got rid of that because it's only like twenty feet over to the other one that the deputies use, and...
That's good idea.
Yeah, saved a little money there, and they thought they could get by fine doing that. And then we looked at getting a used cement building purchased. There was one available down in Des Moines, and they had a man personally look at it, and we gave them okay to get that shipped up because they were gonna deliver it for free, the way it sounded, because they, I think they already had it loaded, and they wanted to get it, get it out of there. So that should be coming here shortly.
Will that be on the same premises, or...
It sits underneath, well, I should say adjacent to the radio tower, because right now, there's, I don't know, if you go up there and look, there's about a three-inch bundle of cables that loops from the radio tower over to City Hall. Then it goes through City Hall and across alley, through the fire station, across alley into the, into the jail. And now it'll come down the tower right into the cement building, which will be inside an enclosed fence, and then it'll go underground from there over to the, so it'll be way more secure, and the weather shouldn't bother quite as much as it could now, or vandalism or whatever. And Steve's up with that building. He said that it was about half price and new, somewhere around twelve to, twelve to twelve five. He was gonna give an invoice on it, and so save us some money there. And that was about it, for me.
Okay, yeah, I was at that Farm Bureau meeting, too, and then the twenty-fifth, we had a, we were supposed to have, had a meeting over in Hamilton County, but we had to do it by telecom because of the weather. We went through the budgets, okayed them, and contracts with Holtz, and girl's day treatment, and a few others. We had to okay all them. But I guess that was all I had.
Okay, going back to the seventeenth of February, Peggy, you had a landfill meeting in Fort Dodge. Things are going pretty darn good down there. They had been over looking at these, what do you wanna call it, the recycling household waste, or not waste, or, you know, paint or whatever facility. Been at Spencer in Cherokee County, looking at that, so I think that's getting closer. Nothing new with the AG on, are fine or whatever. We're working that out, so. Nothing new on the two court cases. But we did find out that our regional landfill, when we went from volume to tonnage, we went to thirty-five dollars a ton. That's very cheap. Cherokee is like fifty-three dollars a ton. I don't know what Spencer is, but I thought, wow. You can see why those people at the DNR think we're screwing up, because we're not charging enough.
Yeah, I was gonna ask you how that was working out, changing number.
Yeah, yeah. And, so we don't know where...
So are you bringing more revenue than you were before, though, by volume?
Yeah.
So you're just...
We're in a extra, accurate, there, probably. And then, again, there, the long range plan is to pour a slab in the summer when you're replacing shingles, dump those shingles off in this slab, and then you can shred them up, and then they can use them in asphalt. So there's some value to them that way, rather than just dumping them in the landfill.
That'd be good.
Then Friday, we left for DC, and Saturday was primary high-tech meeting all day long about cybersecurity and so forth. Sometimes it got a little bit over our head, but very interesting about what is going on. Ukraine apparently is one of the big areas where the, the cyber crooks work out of.
I don't...
And, I don't know, one of the speakers, you know, if you've got no smartphones, you've probably got a Dropbox. I don't use Dropbox, know what it is, I've just heard about it. But the guy says, well, don't use Dropbox, that's not secure, use another kind of box. But, you know, for nobuses like us, it's, but, Carl, I was sitting there, and you look over the room, and you got all these, and everybody's sitting there, or the speaker's talking, looking at their computer or cell phone, so.
It's horrible, yeah.
Different outlook on life. And then what, Sunday and Monday was primarily, Sunday was our... And then what, Sunday and Monday was primarily, uh, Sunday was our book sessions, environment, energy and land use. Probably one of the biggest issues they talked about was the waters of the US, the overreach by the EPA on that. Another controversial issue that didn't really affect us was down in the Gulf where they want NACO to take a bigger stand on how BP settles with those people down there. And, you know, it's in the courts, it's going through the system, so. And then Monday, Joe Biden, Vice President Biden, was able to talk to us. They give a pretty good speech about primarily, uh, he feels that we're sitting in a very good position as a nation. Our economy is basically recovered from the recession. The rest of the world is kinda just puttering along. We got a lot of energy resources and so we're really in a good shape to move ahead. And he put a lot of emphasis on, you got twelve years of free education. They wanna move it up to two years of junior college by changing the tax code on the super wealthy, I guess, to pay for it, so. It was kinda the crux of his speech. And I guess that was about it. We did, Tuesday, we went to see King and Ernst and Grassley.
You had a news reporter, Alan...
Oh, Gregory.
Greg.
Yeah, he gave a good talk about his experiences as a news reporter and so forth, so.
Worked very closely with each of the presidents over the years.
And let's see, I guess that was it for me.
Hey, I'm back on that recycling location for, that'd be like a regional thing, right?
Yeah, yeah. It would be at the landfill.
So that's probably, you know, we'd love to do this stuff independently and we didn't, which is why we did it now, cause how would that, how would you, I mean, you have to pay a fee each county, you know, for your, how do you handle that?
You just, uh...
Take things out?
It's kinda like the recycling, it's a money loser, but it's, uh...
You have it available, so the stuff wouldn't go in the landfill.
Yeah.
So you'd take paints there and aerosol and oils that are still usable.
Yeah, yeah.
And then they'd have like office hours or something where people could come in and get stuff, take stuff out.
Yeah, yeah. You know, like these little propane canisters, yeah? Like at Spencer, they got a recycling of that where they can punch a hole in them and so forth.
Okay. And throw it in the landfill.
Yeah. And eventually they wanna have like a mobile unit that would like come up to Humboldt or go to Webster City or whatever.
So, any idea where that would be located then, that building?
Well, it'd be at the recycling center, the center of space down there.
Okay, sure.
So it'd just be a drive-in.
Well, that'd be handy.
Like a drive-in.
The only, the only problem is the, that's just the way the government works, I guess. The gal that controls that's got so much money, so she wants you to put up a little bitty one first and then you can add on if you need more. Rather than for what you need the first time.
And that costs twice as much at the end.
Yeah. But, uh, cause that makes a lot of sense, especially if you never get a mobile unit to go around to the counties. I think you'd find a lot of interest in that.
Or you get a lot of stuff collected.
And it would be better. Well, you know, we've got a lot of older citizens that are moving to the carousel and they got a hospital, the, under their kitchen, some...
Yeah, they got paint from the thirties.
Yeah, and all that stuff to, how do you get rid of it? Well, the nice thing, we take it down there and they find out it's something that's not usable and they find a way to dispose of it too.
Yeah, and it is usable.
So it gets disposed then. And the, uh, the meeting system for cleaning up the leachate that goes through the, oh, what, I forget the name of that, uh, little area down there, but it's working great. Very, so far, of course, we haven't had warm weather yet, but so far it's working great.
You're talking about landfills and tanks in the counties, that's not, out of the chemical, but I think Cherokee County colonizes a lot of their landfill stuff, makes it in little brackets and use it for heating it, the mental health buildings and...
Oh, they do.
I don't know whether they go beyond that. We had a demonstration one day, the guy was telling me, I picked up and ate some of it. So evidently it's pretty bland, I didn't wanna taste it, but he ate it.
Okay, then.
Yeah. And they talked about putting in furnaces to burn that, but they were over a million bucks a piece for the furnaces, so they didn't go ahead with it, I didn't, I didn't think.
I got some catching up to do. I was going, uh, Tuesday the tenth, we had the nine-one-one and Conference Board, the Sessors Budget Hearing, or Budget Report, and we meet again, Wayce and I, for the hearing on those two things be coming up. On, that was the tenth. On the eleventh, went to Ankeny for the State Supervisors Project Committee meeting and we made final plans for the meeting next day and worked on some plans for the fall conference. Then on the thirtieth, the twelfth, we met in Ankeny and we had some good speakers. That's probably the best meetings I've ever attended apart from our supervisor. We had Torino from the DOT, we had Mark Katie from, from Justice for Online Security and so forth. And we had the governor, Steve and Sid Iran took questions and he, he launched with us. And he was cheerleading the gas tax. He told us to get out here and talk to our legislature, make sure they will adjust. He kinda changed his tune a little bit, but whatever he did must've worked. Uh, I got back here on Friday and we met with this architect on this wellness center. We're trying to pull off, add on to the wellness, into the racquetball club and that's moving on slowly. Um, we have another meeting tomorrow or the next day. And then at one o'clock on that thirteenth, I think most of us are here for a meeting with Craig and Ray to talk about gas tax. You know, he was violently opposed to it and he came in here and wants to talk to us about it. He'd already changed his mind, I think he just wanted to see how we were feeling about it. But anyway, he ended up voting for the gas tax. I think when he walked out here, we knew what he was gonna do. Uh, Wednesday the eighteenth, went back down to Des Moines, the ICAC office. That's where we worked on this electronic transfer clearinghouse and that's where Bob Lincoln was, even if that means we're in one. And we had auditors there and supervisors there and most of the ICAC staff that worked on technology. Harlan, you've been on that board for a long time, ITE as being ETC. Trying to come up with a community, electronic communication system that can use statewide to communicate between the users and state offices and finally reports. It's one of those things kinda over my head, but something that probably gonna have to get pulled off. That was a couple of day and a half and the other day and a half, we started nineteen to twenty, which pretty soon we're gonna hear from Denise Fowler on this insurance. She'll be here to explain that, so I won't talk about that until she gives us a report on that. Harlan mentioned NACO. The thing I noticed on technology, they used to go through technology, IT, IT guys, they all young geeks, but this time they're all gray-haired guys. You know, we're gonna have to grow up and learn to use that stuff, I guess. They was talking about things I didn't know, but Facebook got outdated and a lot of things they were talking about. I haven't learned how to use that, but they're already outdated. That's a way of doing business, I guess. I put on your table there, went to a couple of meetings on, put on, uh, tracker, there's three thousand sixty-six counties in the United States. Call up that website and you get all the data about each individual county. I'm here to see what, compare your county with the others.
Yeah, and talking about that, we left a copy on with representatives and King really jumped on that. He really thought that was really good, a lot of good information for his staff to have for his region.
Another meeting I went to while I was out there on Communications, and I hadn't thought about that, but they were urging, some gal from University of Texas, I think it was, to give a four-hour presentation about public relations of boards, supervisors and the counties. Said we ought to have a mission statement, we ought to go out and try to be friendly or put the best foot forward. They even said you should have all your cards made the same way and have the same kind of insignia, you know, insignia on them. You know, there's just little things they talked about, whether you need to do it or not, I don't know. Uh, like Harlan said, we went to see our three representatives, Grassley and Ernst and King. And basically we talked to them about three or four different things. We talked about federal gas tax, we talked about the waters of the US, and we talked about what the...
Bonding.
Bonding. And another big hot topic was sales tax on the internet. A lot of small businesses get run out of town because, you know, we all go look at something, we go buy it on the internet and don't pay sales tax. And that's a big loss of revenues for, for the state and everybody. It's only for, I think it's a matter of time it's gonna happen. Okay, that's, I'm gonna be quiet. That's pretty much it. It was a good trip. I think the worst meeting we had was some guy talking about policy. I think most of them went to sleep now.
That's been the afternoon.
Nine-one-one, bias, the hardest policy.
Even worse.
You gotta have a good one back, you know.
I would say that looks up at that crime, right?
Denise here yet?
Yep, yep, she's next.
How far is Denise? You kept me getting a report this morning, thank you.
We got it.
Denise Fowler worked with us on insurance and life, we got one notebook up in the end.
I told you she's, she already knows.
She over here?
Yeah, well, she knows she can come in.
All right. You got good news, Horace?
I think so.
Good for you.
We like good news.
You had a nice place to meet down there. I like it.
You know, I do too. Um, it was, it saved us quite a bit of money and the staff was very friendly. The only thing that was, we heard some complaints about was the, uh, the area where that pool was and so forth. It was like a sauna, so.
Oh, wow.
I did, good.
How are you?
There's one more thing I got.
I guess before we start this matter of curiosity, whatever happened with the state insurance investigation, is there anything new or anything...
There's nothing really new. Um, it's, I think it's almost over. We've heard that a few times, but I, I do think it's almost over. I met with them, with the state on the nineteenth and when, at the conclusion of that, he said to me, um, this will finalize the information, I need to get my report together, so.
Good.
Yeah, it's been probably the longest eleven months of my life.
Sure does.
Um, but it's, I, you know, I feel really positive about the outcome, um...
Well, I think everybody does.
Yeah, I, it's, it's just been a shame to have to go through it and have the membership go through it and there's been some relationships that have been hurt in the process and I guess that's unavoidable, um, so, well, we'll see. I, I would expect his report this month, though.
Good.
Okay. All right, so we had our big meeting and of course, all of the information from that is in this book and we can make as many copies of that as you want, just let me know. But what I've done for today is just consolidated the information into, um, more permanent information for Humboldt County as opposed to the entire trust, so I'd like to run through that. So if we start with tab one, the first, the first thing you're gonna see here is the original renewal that was sent to you when I received the numbers from Wellmark relative to the percent increase, the percentage increase that the entire program receives. So I do that so you can see a real apples-to-apples comparison of what's going on today relative to your funding and so forth and what will happen with the Wellmark increase. In addition to Wellmark's premium increasing for your 2015 plan year, your IGHCP consulting fees are going down. In some groups, they went up and others, they went down because, um, the way we priced IGHCP in the past was on a percent of premium, so, which is why we're, why we're in the position we're in and why there were so many questions, is because we would receive Wellmark's premium, um, and then a percentage of that was paid to us for the administration of the program. Because everybody has different premium rates, those numbers were all over the board relative to what that percent meant to each group. So now what we're doing is, um, through the advisory committee, that it was a committee put together by the IGHCP governing board, we decided to go with a flat fee. So everybody's gonna pay ten dollars for a single policy per employee per month and twenty-five for a family. So like I said, in some cases, groups saw a bit of an increase on their fees and other groups like yours, some decrease.
Okay.
You went down quite a bit.
The groups, the new, the groups that were, um, the very first groups to form IGHCP saw probably the biggest decrease. So you guys were one of those.
Right, yeah.
So with that said, in the yellow up there is what's going on today relative to your premiums. Your medical premium, of course, consists of Wellmark, your partial self-fund and money that's set aside to pay your claims, the EBS billing fee, IGHCP consulting fee, claims administration, to get to a total. In past years, your EBS billing fee and your consulting fee were wrapped up in your medical premium and your Wellmark premium. Now those are all broken down.
Separated out.
Yeah. So then down below, you'll see what's gonna happen in 2015 if you made no changes. That would put a hundred and sixty-five thousand two oh six into your partial self-fund account. Um, that's the account that's, that's set aside to pay claims. Okay, but if you turn to the next page, this is your utilization report. This is a, these are numbers that I look at very closely on a monthly basis for, for your group and all IGHCP groups, so I know what's going on inside of your partial self-fund account. So the very first column there, the 2014-15, that's your, that's your current plan year. So the funds received so far to pay your claims were ninety-two-four. And then what we've paid out of that account is almost forty-eight thousand. So when I annualize those numbers, you know, where are you at as far as what you've paid in versus paid out? We overfunded by about forty-four thousand five hundred dollars. And then of course, your claims balance there is, is right below that. That's as of January. So through January, that's your partial self-fund claims account balance you reserve, in other words.
And you know, really until the last three years, we haven't seen that increasing excessively much. It's been a benefit because we use it to write down insurance costs.
It's, it's, you're doing exactly what you wanna do. Absolutely.
That's what I'm getting at, I guess, yeah.
Yeah. So here's the thing, you know, why do we see such a jump from eleven to twelve? We increased, if you recall, we were trying to save money relative to the Wellmark premium. That's the single biggest number that we are faced with. So we got together and we increased the county's liability relative to the out-of-pocket maximums. What that meant was you did more partial self-funding because it was working well, so we did more of it. Then ACA happened, the Affordable Healthcare Act, and it said you can't have your deductibles and your out-of-pocket limits as high as you do. Even though you were funding them back to the, you know, to a level that was acceptable, the government still said sixty-three fifty on a single plan was as high as you could be, you were at eight thousand. And twelve-seven, twelve thousand seven hundred was as high as you could be for a family and you were at sixteen thousand. So we had to, at your last renewal, back that, that out-of-pocket down so that you were compliant with the government's federal regulation. When that happened, we didn't, we didn't decrease the amount we were funding. So we were funding to that, that exposure and when that exposure lessened, we didn't change what we were doing and there was reason behind that because there's a lot of unknowns relative to what was gonna happen with the Affordable Healthcare Act. You know, out-of-pocket max, or I mean, um, the credits to out-of-pocket maximums from your doctor's office visits were changing. There was just, there was just enough moving parts out there that we were unsure about, but we left that funding the same. So that's why you've seen that increase, okay?
And my guess is they wanted more of that premium coming to the insurance companies to help carry the cost of this healthcare program. I mean, it was better for us to have left it where it was.
Oh, there's no question, you and everybody else.
But, that being said, they're getting more premium to the insurance companies, like lowering it, so they're getting more money to make them function.
And the more premium, the more premium tax and, you know, all of those things, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so then if you look on the next page, this ultimately is where I think you need to be going forward. Um, I don't see a need to increase your premiums for your next plan year. I would hold those just where they're at. So how you accomplish that is you decrease the amount of new money going into that partial self-fund account. Okay, so if you don't make any changes to your plan, to the Wellmark plan or to your employee plan, you, it's easily sustainable for you to take a zero percent rate increase and put a hundred and twenty-seven, almost a hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars of new money into your account to pay your claims and you'll still be very comfortable relative to your reserve and your risk. into your account to pay your claims and you'll still be very comfortable relative to your reserve and your risk.
Do you think that will stabilize that figure of three hundred thousand about?
I think it's gonna continue to grow a little bit higher. But I mean, I think what we're gonna wanna do is just keep a close eye on it. Um, it's likely, unless the bottom of the plan falls off or, you know, something even more dramatic happens with the healthcare, um, reform, it's very possible you guys could take little to no increase in the, in the next couple of renewal years.
Mm-hmm, that'd be good.
Yeah.
I agree with that.
No, I mean, especially with what your counterparts are doing. You know, if you look around you, the other cities, counties, schools, that aren't in a program like ours, are seeing double-digit rate increases.
What do you have, twenty, twenty-eight members?
Um, we have thirty.
Thirty?
Mm-hmm. It's been a great.
We're in a good group.
Yeah.
We're in a really good group, yeah. Fortunately, we were the early ones.
You were, you were, yep, yep.
Our number is the number one out of the two. I think you were the first one in Humboldt County last week, were the first one in.
Um.
Well, we were in the first year.
Yeah.
We were in the first group, yeah. We got the first low number.
You were one of the original seven.
H probably came before some of the other ones the next time we got that low number.
Yeah, it was you guys, Hancock, Henry, Jefferson. So, part of the reason you guys had a higher consulting fee, when you guys came in back in two thousand and five, um, the percent that was paid to insurance agents was higher than it is now. So as time's gone on, what gets paid to insurance agents has gone down. So, um, and, and when you guys started and all of those groups started, I think, I wanna say it was like three percent. So if you were at three percent then, whatever you started at is what you stayed at because then everybody got the same renewal. So if you're at three percent and then the city of Webster City comes in in two thousand and twelve and the, and what insurance agents typically get paid is two percent, then, yeah. So there was enough.
Our fifty-eight and seven have been pretty steady, hasn't it, as far as number of values?
Yes. Yep, so you're, you're, the components obviously would be the four-eighty to Wellmark, twelve oh one on a family. Your partial self-funding would go from ninety-nine dollars on a single to seventy-seven on a single, from two twenty-five to one seventy-four. You're gonna see your billing stay exactly the same, consulting fees go down. Another difference you see on this renewal that you didn't see on the one prior, at the IGHCP board meeting on February twentieth, the board voted to accept a fifty percent, a fifty cent reduction in the EBS fee to allow for that fifty cents to be moved into a legal or audit fund. For the first time, you and IGHCP members, other groups are gonna commingle your money, just a small amount, to pay for, um, legal in the event something were to ever happen to us again. Um, not in a million years, in my wildest dreams, what I've ever imagined. You guys would need an attorney. Um, when we've needed an attorney in the past for your twenty-eighty and your bylaws and stuff like that, we just took care of it. Um, but now with the most recent happenings, I can see where you need an unbiased, um, individual that's not related to me or us, you know, at Two Rivers, to consult, consult you as a group. So, we have reached out to, um, is it Ailers? What was this, their name? Just lost it.
The law firm?
Yeah.
Alers?
Yeah, I think so, A-H-L-E-R-S. Um, it would be in this book, his name's in this book there, but.
You're out of work.
Des Moines.
Yeah, that makes sense.
And they work with an awful lot of governmental entities. That, we looked at, I think, three different attorneys and they were selected by the advisory committee because of their experience.
Good, I think that's a good move to do.
Yeah. So, that will change your premium rates back to where they're at currently today, five eighty eighteen and fourteen thirteen forty eight, for that increase of zero percent.
We like having you come back every year when you bring that kind of news.
It's been pretty.
Well, then it's helping Nelson because we're getting some sharing from the employers. And you know, that's, that's important to him.
That helps a lot.
We're kinda, we're bringing it on both, we're working at it from both ends a little bit and that's kinda what we need to do.
You do.
My side don't get hit so hard on everything.
You, and we've had bad years, I mean, it's a possible.
Sure, we're gonna have another bad year, there's no doubt about that someday.
Yeah, and, but what we count on is not all thirty groups having that bad year at the same time. And, um, that's the whole concept of insurance and spreading risk and it's, and it's worked quite well, so.
And I think what you guys have done for us well is we've had growth and we've had sustaining growth. We aren't leaps and bounds and getting in trouble. I think that always helps keep the premiums down, but we don't, we aren't just going out and taking anybody. We're taking good, or good communities and stuff.
We are, good risks, yep. And everybody that comes in is rated based on their risk. So we're not giving shelf rates to groups not knowing their health history. So, the next page there is just a glance at your current benefit set. So you can see in the dark gray area, that, those are the areas of your policy that were partially self-funded. With the, um, Blue Cross Blue Shield out-of-pocket, single and family, you can see now being at sixty-three fifty and twelve-seven. In the past, that had always been two times what your deductibles were, so it was, you know, eight sixteen, eight thousand, single sixteen, but again, because of ACA, we had to reduce that. Relative to ACA, nothing's changing really for your employees going into the next plan year with the exception of your prescription drugs accumulating to your out-of-pocket maximums. So what that means is today, when you have your, an employee go get a prescription filled, let's say they get a thirty dollar prescription and they get that every single month, all twelve months of the year. That thirty dollars that they pay each of those twelve months is never credited to their out-of-pocket maximum, which, as I said, on a single is six thousand three hundred and fifty dollars. So if you have an employee that never uses the hospital and just simply gets prescription drugs filled, they never satisfy any part of that sixty-three fifty because they go on and pay those copays before their out-of-pocket's met and even after. Beginning July one, everybody will receive credit to their out-of-pocket maximum for their prescription drug usage. So, you know, if you have heavy prescription users, especially if they're up in those eighty-five dollar drug tiers, you're gonna have people hit your out-of-pocket that have never hit it before, okay? So, um, what does that mean for you as a, as a group? If, if you only allow that accumulation to happen at the Wellmark level and you don't make modifications under your, under your Wellmark plan to allow that accumulation to your three thousand or fifteen hundred dollar level, there's no additional exposure to you. So let me rephrase that. If you don't have that accumulation happen at your employee level, fifteen hundred dollar deductible, I mean, out-of-pocket, there's no additional risk to the county. If you say, we're gonna follow Wellmark and we're gonna allow those copayments to fill their fifteen hundred dollar bucket, then it's gonna eat into your partial self-fund. Can you afford that with your current reserve? Yeah, I think so. Do I recommend it? No.
No, I don't think so.
So what you're saying is a ten dollar copay for medical, physician visits and so forth would be into that same bucket and we would change it?
Right, right now, your physician visits are going into that bucket.
Okay.
They do, but it's a, it's the drug part that isn't.
It's, you're gonna get, you're gonna choose, yeah.
It's the copay part of it.
Right, I wouldn't, I wouldn't do that at, at the partial self-fund level. Um, if we wanna watch it for a year and then, and then take a look at it again. I received an incredible amount of data from Wellmark about a week and a half ago that will allow me to analyze the risk involved in letting you do that, that accumulation at your partial self-fund level. I had to give the, the electronic file to our IT department because it was so large and it had, it had three years of, of prescription claims for every IGHCP member, but not by group. So it was, it was just overwhelming. Yeah, I, I had, so I have to go in and have IT pull out all the Humboldt, you know, all, all, all thirty groups and then I can, then I can analyze them group by group to figure out what your risk is. But I, I can tell you that what I've seen so far, I wouldn't do it.
Well, and we aren't taking, we aren't changing anything we're not doing now.
No, you're, in fact.
We'll change that until we know what we want to do.
Right, in fact, if you.
If it's working good.
Right, and if you do nothing.
Because, the other side of it is, I think it encourages individuals to go for generic drugs. If you don't, it's gonna open the door for all these expensive copay ones.
I agree.
Why wouldn't you? I mean, if you knew you're gonna meet that.
Once things are covered at a hundred percent.
It just changes your attitude.
It changes your, yeah.
I mean, I'm on all generics, I've got five drugs and I'm on all, I'm gonna, I knew them, there's one copay, but I understand that.
Yeah.
I would've stayed with it if I thought it was doing what it was supposed to be doing.
If you don't do anything, the employees are still getting a benefit above where they're at half today. Because it's still gonna happen at the Wellmark level, they're still gonna, if they get to their Wellmark out-of-pocket maximum, their claims are gonna be covered at a hundred percent. That's never happened before. So doing nothing, you've, the, the employee plan has still improved.
Stayed, yeah.
It's improved because the, the accumulation by federal law has to happen.
We're going to this.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep. So as it stands right now, there's really nothing we can do at the Wellmark level with what we have today for cost savings. I have you on the highest out-of-pocket that the federal government will allow. Um, you could make a drug change, but you guys have such high generic utilization because of that zero dollar copayment that I, I really am discouraged to doing that.
And that's what we want.
Even if you could get a few dollars savings from Wellmark, I think you would see the spike, I think you'd see a change in your claims. So, I really like your plan design as far as what we're purchasing from Wellmark. Um, now, that said, we are getting a couple of options that I don't have yet, that I've requested from Wellmark, that are called minimum value plans because the government says that you have to offer, um, you know, a certain level of benefit to your employees to be ACA compliant. Some groups wanna offer dual options. This isn't you, I don't wanna get too confusing, but some groups wanna offer a dual option so that they can allocate dollars or, or call the county plan this minimum value plan. So, it, it, it could create a little bit of savings, but it would, it would also need radical plan design changes for you and with negotiations and so forth, I don't think that's an option. Okay, on the next page is your, um, your life insurance. You just have a basic life insurance benefit and there's no change in that benefit going into your next plan year nor is there a change in premium, those are staying the same. So that is also zero percent. On the next page, it's just simply a reminder of our human resources consulting individual, that's Cindy Lynch. Cindy formerly was the human resource director for the city of Council of Love. When she decided to retire, we asked her if she would come aboard and work for IGHCP to provide consulting services, um, to, on the human resource, personnel, bargaining, labor relations, you know, those types of things for groups that don't have human resource services within their group, within their city or county. Um, for these services, there's no additional cost to you as, as a county, so. And I don't know if you guys use Paul Roof? Do you use Paul?
No.
Renee, Renee, okay. So, I mean, there, if you have a question or you want some resource, research done or you just wanna second opinion, just don't hesitate, shoot her an email, let her do the work, she'll get back. Yeah.
She's on the floor.
I didn't think, I didn't think, same gal.
Yep, yep, it's the same gal.
Met her last year, she was up for meeting.
Yeah, she does, she does a good job. She's, she loves to do research, so, um, I'd encourage you to rely on her where necessary. Have two, then ACA changes on the horizon. Um, I won't go through what happened on January first, we're, we're kind of past that. So July one of twenty fifteen, our ex-copayments will be credited towards the out-of-pocket maximum. Below that, I said recommendation, process to Wellmark plan only and not do it under the PSF, which we talked about. Scheduled for twenty sixteen and beyond, employee tax returns will require proof of medical coverage. We're assisting, helping you guys with that with the data that you're gonna need to provide that on your employee W twos. Employers with less than a hundred, full-time employees may pay penalties if anybody receives a subsidy on the exchange. High-cost plan, excise taxes is on the horizon, that's scheduled for twenty eighteen. That's that Cadillac tax. And then auto enrollment will start with employers for, that have more than two hundred employees, which wouldn't apply to you.
How close are we to the Cadillac?
Um, you're not.
Don't have to worry about it.
No. And the big, you know, the Cadillac tax, that's gonna have to change because the formula that they use to determine whether somebody's on a Cadillac plan or not is not based on benefit design, but benefit premium. So in other words, if you have a one hundred dollar deductible with a two hundred dollar out-of-pocket maximum, okay? And you don't have any cop, I mean, it's just the richest plan, the most Cadillac plan you've ever seen. But the premiums are low, then you're not gonna get taxed. If you have a, a high deductible plan, not far from a Cadillac, but the group has been sick, claims are high, premiums are high, that group's gonna get taxed because it's based on how much premium you pay. It's backwards.
Yeah, that's true.
It's penalizing you.
Yeah, so they have to change it, um, and, and they've said they're going to, they're gonna address it. So, the, the good thing about the way we do it with partial self-funding is that Cadillac tax, that picture of, of premium only applies to your Wellmark plan. So they don't consider the partial self-funding, so when they look at your premium, they don't look at your total premium. No, they just look at your Wellmark premium and then that's how it becomes applicable.
Sure.
So most of the risk of partial self-fund will be saved from that. Okay, this page then is just a reminder that we do offer Cobra early retiree services, so if, um, for groups that aren't participating in that, that's something that we can do for you, as is the flexible spending account. And then the last page is just, uh, the contact information for the IGHCP servicing team. I've added Cindy to that, so you have her direct line as well as her email address. If you have human resources personal questions, reach out to her.
Denise, in that morning meeting, I went through a whole bunch of gyrations. We gotta start doing it in two thousand sixteen.
Yes.
The Gregory meeting.
Yes.
It's gonna take a full-time person more, couldn't it?
Yes, it's, it is mind-blowing. Um, we are offering that same, so remember when Susan Freed spoke about the sixty fifty-five and fifty-six on Thursday? That was overwhelming and, um, you need to hear it almost two, three times to understand it. So, we're offering another session, that same exact topic by Susan and she'll go through it again in the same level of detail, so it'll be an hour, hour and a half. So we're gonna do it via, um, a teleconference or webinar so that you can have those that, you know, if you want people from your office to sit in on it, that interact with payroll or whatever, then you have the right people hearing it. Um, so, we were gonna wait about thirty days, um, in between and then offer another class. So, we'll get information out to you as that gets a little closer.
It's not gonna affect the users, but it's gonna affect their office because you're gonna have a spreadsheet with every individual, every month's activity, every day of the year. Just mind-blowing, I hope so, take.
It really is. It really is. Um, now, those regs just came out, I mean, they just came out at the end of the year. So, everybody's kinda scrambling to create software and so forth to accommodate the, the government requirements, us included. So, we've been told by all of our vendors that we interact with that they're gonna provide us with all of the information. They're gonna, um, they're going to help us understand how to extract the information from our system so that we can get it to you. We have everything you're gonna need, it's just a matter of pulling it all together in a way that we can deliver it to you. So, um, we'll, we'll interface a lot in that process.
Cause you're gonna print something up, it's gonna show that it's spent and everybody's gonna have to match up with the IRS, basically. So it's fine.
Yeah.
So you think about every individual.
Denise is sort of working with solutions. These firms are working with solutions too, that's part of this.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. 'Cause solutions sent out a note that they're working on, um, some of these spreadsheets and that for us, so it'll be right on the system. Make it a little easier than you can just import it in.
It's kinda the point where the computer knows more about us than we know about ourselves, anyway.
There's no question.
It's unbelievable.
Yeah. Yeah, sometimes too much. And I don't know if you guys got any information or had concern about the Anthem breach, but.
I wondered about that.
Yeah. Um, so there were some Iowans that were affected, but not us.
Good.
Yeah.
For those.
If you, there's a small chance that if you doctored outside of the state of Iowa, um, that some of your information could have been breached, but not social security numbers. So, the, the fear is, is minimal.
Some of the other states are not so lucky, I understand.
Yeah.
But the thing that's scary is, as we share more and more medical information, complete information, it's just a matter of time for something.
And it's, and so many, you know, Wellmark, of course, is, is part of the Blue Cross Blue Shield Association. And there's a Blue Cross Blue Shield in every state in the United States, so at some level, everything, everything's, there's a lot of legs. But they have assured us that, that there were very few Iowans that were affected. Those few that were affected, um, limited information was leaked, and it did not include social security numbers.
I guess you got plenty to keep busy with, don't you?
Yeah.
She'd still go through this, she got a.
I'm afraid, yeah, I'm afraid of that.
I didn't go last year, I stayed home and watched them lose, I thought, I'm not spending money to watch them down there.
Well, it ain't much better when you lose the championship.
This is our year.
Oh, no.
Cubs two. We're, we're coming back and all.
Yeah, see, then you're a state today, the Cubs got through the top.
Yeah.
Ten prospects.
My.
We're all, we're gonna go all the way.
I think so.
The Greenberg Cubs are two years away from making a series.
You got, yep, yep.
Um, did you sign anything when you were at the meeting, Phil? 'Cause I think you have a consulting agreement we need to sign to yet, and probably our renewal on.
You probably did sign it, I would imagine. Did you sign the consulting agreement?
Yes, I signed that part.
Okay.
Friday. But then we have a renewal we need to sign.
Yeah, once I go back and report to Cindy, Evelyn, she'll then get you everything you need to finalize.
So that'll be coming.
So did you guys already approve the zero?
No, we hadn't did anything.
Okay, okay. So, yeah, we'll just need something, how to get your billing ready and so forth.
Should we, don't we do that with the budget picking, or would you need a separate motion for that?
Um, I'm not sure we've ever made a motion to, I guess we just approved it when we're signing the contract, which will be the changes that she sends, but if you need something ahead of time. I don't, no. I don't put a lot of time. I know, I, I don't get, I try not to get involved in the paperwork, 'cause I seem to mess it up. So I just, she'll send everything all together, um, that way it's not P. Phil to you.
You're just gonna come back, I know we wanna go to the zero.
Yep.
On this wellness information, pretend that voluntary, you're gonna send us a bunch of information on that. Will you tell us a little more about that?
The Wellmark piece?
Yeah.
Um. It's, it's not, it's good. It's, it's a kind of labor-intensive. Um, it would require your employees to, you know, be on their computers and, and interact pretty regularly with it, with that type of program. Um, but it's embedded in your plan, so there's no additional cost, which is the, what makes it attractive. Um, there are some things that we could do for you on a local level, I think, that you could get more value from. Um, where we, where like Candy from my team, she would interact with your providers and so forth here to put together, like screenings and those types of things, to try to get a wellness initiative going. I would suggest putting together a small committee, so you have some internal cheerleaders working, you know, working the employees. But I, I think that it loses a lot of sizzle when it takes just individual interaction in a computer. Um, it, you get a lot further when you have more camaraderie, yeah, group and on a mobile level. So we, we have a wellness, um, a wellness expert on our team, and then we also have Candy, who does a lot of coordination. So if that's something that you have any interest in, I mean, and if you wanted to wait until the spring, you know, once you get your renewal finalized and everything done, we can come, we can bring them up and, and meet with you and put together some, some goals and stuff like that, so.
I don't know, maybe employees are interested, and once a while, somebody's inquiring about it, I think.
Yeah, I mean, it's funny, wellness, wellness is whatever you want it to be. It can be as elaborate or minimal as, as you want. The people that typically are wanting to know about the wellness are the ones that are already healthy and are looking for some sort of incentive, yeah. Um, so those guys aren't hard to get at, it's those that are doing nothing that you need to get at, yeah. So, um, but we have, but we have had some success with it. We have a few groups up in Spencer that have just done fabulous with their wellness program. They're now three, four years into it, so we do have some good ideas and some knowledge and experience that we could bring to you.
Well, you know, what probably makes those things work better is when you get a group that is active, that is willing to reach out to friends of ones that aren't. You've gotta have that core, I mean, it's gotta be those trying to get more, not just for themselves, but to try and increase larger numbers.
You do.
Any of this stuff, just like they watch, any program works great as long as you have enough numbers.
You've gotta figure out, right, you have to figure out what, what, you know, what the incentive is for your employees. And what, what incents some people won't be next to. So, you know, maybe the road workers will work towards one incentive, where the auditor's office will work towards something else, and that's fine. Um, but, you know, some people wanna work for a extra day off, and other people wanna work for a gift certificate, where others will wanna work for a gym membership. So you just have to find that and, and then go that direction.
One, that doesn't fit all.
That's the thing, yeah.
It doesn't, never, I don't care what, you know, whether you're private, you're public, you're, it doesn't matter. One size doesn't fit all with wellness.
Thanks, Denise.
Yeah, I'll stick around for a little bit.
Okay.
Nice to have good news.
I understand we take no action later on, just similar to what I did. I forgot to mention one thing on the course, on Thursday, I met with Pat Caldwell, the sheriff, and nine-one-one people, they're every day coming up with a new program, this place has NEXUS that we're having, to notify us all on emergencies. Something that they come up with is statewide, it's free, three sets of code red. And I think the next thirty days, the way it sounds, they're gonna change it over. I think they can transfer all the data that we've signed up for already. Anyway, sheriff can tell you more about it, and Therese, Pat, they talked a pretty good thing, and everybody there kind of agreed with it, so.
Got a statewide thing?
What?
Statewide program?
Well, they called, uh, we got some men, they're drawing, I don't remember anybody. Clay County's in it real big right now, and they really like it. Anything else for the day? Any other comments from visitors, anybody from board, Peggy?
I'm gonna adjourn.
Post you to adjourn, you post by heart.
I'll second.
Always favorite journal, say aye.
All right.
What's your name, what's your period?
Nine thirty-four.
We have a little work that I should done. I'll spend the tax money.
Close office?